Call this meeting to order, please rise and pledge allegiance. You'll have to take that over after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings and welcome. I'm gonna start the meeting off with our first visitor, Jessica, from, is gonna talk about prevention. She's a prevention coordinator for the Boys and Girls Club. Jessica, you wanna come join us? You can sit, stand, whatever you want, whatever you're, however you're comfortable. And if you're gonna sneeze, you have to stay farther back. Oh, we can.
So, hi, I'm Jessica, I'm the prevention coordinator at the Boys and Girls Club. I think I came last year, maybe a year ago, and talked about our prevention grant. We were in the process of collecting information and writing the grant. And we've done all of that. We were looking at, for this grant, it's a state and federal grant, and we were looking at, or we are looking at underage and high-risk drinking in the community. For high-risk drinking, they define that as binge drinking and drinking and driving. So those are the things that we're looking at. We looked at the youth risk behavior survey, we talked to law enforcement, we held some focus groups to gather information. We wrote and submitted the grant in January. And then there was a little bit of a gap I left on maternity leave, so there was a little bit of a gap. And then the state, we went back and forth with the state trying to come up with a plan, and everything was approved the end of May. So we really have just started working on our plan and moving forward, and I thought since some of the stuff is gonna be out in the community, it might be nice for you guys to know where it's coming from and what it's about. So, the Boys and Girls Club holds the grant. We have a prevention council, which is made up of community members, business, other prevention people within the community, schools, couple of parents. We meet once a month on the second Thursday from 9:30 to 11:00 at the Boys and Girls Club, and they're gonna help oversee the activities of the grant. Because as part of this grant, they wanna make sure that it's community-based. So for us, that meant involvement from the community. So they're overseeing the activities. And at this point, we really have just started. But some of the things that are, that are gonna happen, some things have already happened, but some things that'll come forward. One of the things that came out within our research is that we really wanted to reach out more to parents in the community, to really provide some education and support to them around underage drinking. So we've started doing community outreach once a month to families to encourage family time, and again, just give information. So in September, we did a family prevention bingo and spaghetti supper. We had 109 people come. The line was out the door for, which was more than we expected, we had to go buy more food, so it was really great. People said they had a great time with it. The soccer team, Virgin Soccer Team, served the meal to everyone. So it was great community support, and we really wanna continue to do that. In October, just a couple weeks ago, we helped with the Haunted Forest. We did some outreach, we gave out information to parents when they bought tickets. And then the club had, like, a skit in the, in the Haunted Forest piece. In November, we're gonna work with a tobacco coordinator, and we're gonna hold some workshops for parents at the school. It'll be November 17th, from 5:30 to 8:00, I believe, at the school. It's called Difficult Conversations. We have a facilitator coming in to work with parents around how to have those difficult conversations with kids. On alcohol, tobacco, but just everyday conversations with kids. You know, why, you know, why do I, how come I can't have a cellphone now my friends have one? Just ways for them to be able to communicate with their, with their kids. So that's what we have so far. We're definitely looking for ideas and ways to partner to continue to do this. Like I said, we're doing it once a month, so any ideas anyone has for us to partner and other things would be great. The other thing we're doing is we're looking at that high-risk behavior piece. And one of the things that we talked about with law enforcement was that the bars are closing at 2:00, and law enforcement goes off around midnight. So there's a little bit of a gap there. And in our focus groups, people acknowledge that, everyone knows that. So we're working with law enforcement. In January, we're gonna do a DUI checkpoint in our community, and it'll be between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 a.m., so that we can kind of catch those, people come out of the bar and let people know that they are out there, and then it's not okay to drink and drive in our community. And to kind of get that off the ground, in November, we're gonna do a campaign called "Taiwan On." And we have red ribbon magnets that we're gonna give out in the community, so that people can put them on the cars and support not drinking and driving. And then in December, we'll, we're gonna do an ad in the paper, and then in January, we'll do the checkpoint, so really giving some information out to people. And also, in November, we're doing, at one of their checkpoints, we're giving out information so that when people get pulled over, they're gonna get a handful of resources, so they're not just getting pulled over and going through all of that, they're gonna get something out of it. So I think we just had 500 bags printed up, the trash bags for cars, and we're getting stuff put into it, so people will get all kinds of resources. And then in March, we're gonna hold an underage drinking forum, again, as aimed towards parents. We're gonna have someone come in and talk about teen development, specifically brain development and growth, and how that impacts when kids are drinking, what that does to them, and just, again, different ways to talk to your kids. And then in April, we're gonna do a retail recognition night, and this is, hopefully you guys will get probably an invitation in the mail, and hopefully you can come. The stores and bars in this community have been really great about carding, which is really important to prevent underage drinking. So we wanted to thank them for doing the compliance checks, for following through and working with DLC. So we're gonna host, it'll be for all of Addison County. All of the stores and bars that have passed their checks will be invited to have dinner with us, they'll get an award and a certificate, so we hope that you guys will come and kind of support that, so that they'll continue to do that and prevent our kids from being able to purchase alcohol, and also tobacco. And then, I, I think you guys have got a handout. The rest of it is just our calendar of events. We're doing everything from, in March, we're gonna do a campaign called "Parents Who Host Lose the Most." And kids from the high school on Thursday helped me make a commercial. We hired a company to come down, and they, they did a commercial on what happens to parents, the risks if you host a party, both the health and legal consequences, so we'll be airing that, hopefully you guys will have a chance to see that. And then we're just working with, we're gonna work with Job Corps and help train some of their staff. So we're kind of all over the place, but hopefully in the next few weeks, we're still seeing stuff in the ads in the paper, and we're really hoping the stores will put some of our posters up and just start seeing it out in the community for the next couple months. We have about a year and a half left on the grant, and at that point, we'll be looking for future funding and kind of moving forward, so that we can keep these projects going. But I just thought I'd kind of give an update that the grant finally has gone through, and that we're kind of working towards these projects.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, does anybody have any questions from Jessica? If not, we wanna thank you for coming out on this evening, taking time away from your family, and sharing this information with us.
And I'm, I'm at the Boys and Girls Club if anyone does come up with anything, so.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Our next set of visitors is Captain Stan Walker and Mike Shea from the Moonlight Lady. Gentlemen, would you like to come up and join us in the front? Thank you.
We appreciate you making time for us on your schedule here tonight. And Mike Shea is the owner of the Moonlight Lady. As the mayor said, I'm the captain on board. And we've been able to visit your fair city here in the last couple of years, and we hope that we're kind of part of your long history from Lake Jam Plain Steamboats Company in 1813 through the Daniels Company in 1780, all the way up to just a few years ago in 97, again, had a small cruise boat up here. So we appreciate you allowing us to come in. We worked with Rennie a couple of years ago, and we kind of put forth this proposal to him about coming up and visiting your city here. He was very receptive to it, and at that point, we were able to invest a little bit in some cleats and some changing of power to be able to accommodate our needs and also upgrade the electrical needs that was needed there for anybody else that had some large power requirements. Since that time, we've also been able to generate what we feel is a positive influence for Virgin's in not only our website dedicating one webpage to talking about Virgin's, but we've also been able to get some very nice coverage in the Boston Globe, almost two pages in that, Vermont Life, Vermont Magazine, and a number of other travel. It's hard to quantify the benefits that we hope that we're bringing forward to Virgin's, but one of the things as the captain that I've noticed, we've had a number of people come on board, and we tried to get into Virgin's by at least 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, and all of our passengers are then able to walk around Virgin's and see what the stores are, and, but basically, are introduced to Virgin's. If I could use an example, we had two families on our last trip that was from Vermont, and they traveled from Connecticut to their home in northern part of the state, and also they traveled over to New York to visit their family in New York. And both of them commented how they've driven through Virgin's, but never stopped, it was always en route. They spent an hour walking around town, and when they came back, they had a list of restaurants that they had to come back and visit. So we think that we're, again, a benefit to Virgin's in our exposure, and we're here tonight to say that we hope that we can continue in this relationship.
Open it up to questions.
Does your boat visit Virgin's every summer?
Right now, approximately twice a week, two to three times a week.
And that, and that's for overnight, right?
Yes, one night. One of them's Saturday night, Saturday or Sunday, and then one or two nights during the week. It changes a little bit as our schedule changes. We were scheduled, we'd run a 20-week schedule. We are, we're still new at it. We probably were in Virgin's 15 times, 18 times for the summer, over beginning of Memorial Day weekend till October 18th. So was that maybe 20 weeks, once a week, if you took an average this, this year?
Just out of curiosity, what, in your opinion, about what percentage of the people take advantage of the opportunity to get up into the city? Does everybody get out and go, or?
What we find is that just about everybody, other than some folks who may have some physical limitations. That hill is a good hike for some of our clients, but I'd say at least 90%.
How do you go about maintaining, make sure you have the right property, the length for your boat when you park your boat? Does it, how do you keep the people from, do you put up things for reserve, or?
Actually, we've, Rennie has set it up with the Public Works Department, that we call them up and we confirm when we're gonna be here, so that then the main dock is reserved for us the night that we arrive. So this way, even though we have a schedule, I call them to confirm the actual nights that we'll be able to make it.
There's signs posted.
When do the signs go out? In the morning?
The day of. You would call, so let's say that they have an overnight for Friday night, let's say, then there's three signs that go out there that, in essence, reserves space on that dock, on the McDonough Drive side.
So it has a time on the sign after? Such and such a time, any boats here have to be?
I'm not sure exactly what it says, I think it says a time.
Yeah, it's usually the signs say from 4:30 p.m. until 7:30 a.m. the following morning.
Yeah, the sign, the part of the sign is already, it's fixed. It's actually something that the city had purchased, where it says, you know, "Reserve for cruise boat," and then there's a box that outlines the date or time or whatever in there, so, you know, 'cause it, there's other, that's what changes.
Two questions. First, how long is your boat? And the second question is, do you buy any supplies for your cooking from this, from town?
Our boat is, it's 65 feet with the bow spread, it's 72 feet. And, okay, not every time do we buy supplies. When we're short, we have purchased supplies here occasionally at the liquor store, occasionally our staff, even though we have good food, after 20 weeks, our staff visits some of the restaurants here. The customers are normally fed on board, unless they request to eat at a specific restaurant.
I have one question. Do you feel like there's enough information for your passengers down there to introduce them to the city, or is there anything that you could suggest that would maybe facilitate people come up and visit?
Actually, you folks have a great pamphlet, the history of Virgin's. It talks about, you know, the first steamboat female captain in the world, and if we could have some of those so that we can pass out, I think that would be extremely beneficial. Right now, our crew is instructed on a lot of the history of the lake. We take an hour and a half cruising up the Otter Creek, so we talk quite a bit about the history, how you folks were a major manufacturing for this region right here, how you were also connected in with the railroad and the lake for shipping supplies, and that's how you really built. So a lot of it is verbal. We also, though, on our boat do have some pictures of Virgin's, one of them shows all of the ware, not warehouse, manufacturing plants along the falls and then down the side, so we talk about the history. One of the things that we find with our clientele is, we're a cruise boat, and yes, they like that. But folks who come with us, it seems to be extremely important for them to know the history and the people of where they're traveling. So we try to pride ourselves in being able to pass on some of that knowledge and having our crew knowledgeable to be able to do that. But physical pamphlets would definitely help, because that also has a map.
A city map.
It has a city map, and then has all of your different architecturally significant homes and things like that marked on it besides the store, so I think that would...
I'd have to see which one he's, I mean, I have some, some pamphlets on the Cordenza in my office, I'm not sure which one they have that they use to hand out, I don't know.
I think they stock in the white one.
That one?
Yeah. It's a nice book.
Yeah, it talks about the history, and, you know, like I said, it seems like a lot of folks who come on our tours are really interested in knowing some of the history of where we visit. And again, we always, our goal is, yes, we're a cruise boat, and the experience is part of it, but then also being able to arrive someplace to allow people to get off and walk around. That has become a strong element of our choices.
How many people on your, how many people on your boat?
We carry up to 16.
Up to 16?
16. We have eight cabins on board.
I don't wanna micromanage your boat, but relative to, I have gone to your website and seen the various packages, Stan, typically your packages are all-inclusive, if you, I don't wanna say all-inclusive, 'cause I know there's a cash bar on your boat.
Yeah.
But basically, when somebody signs up for their one-day, or their two-day, or their three-day trip, it includes meals, is that correct?
Yes, it does.
So the, so the point is, is that people traveling, of the, of the folks that are on your boat, traveling to Virgin's, in essence, they've already purchased a meal.
Correct.
All right? So the point is, is that, is that, to be, to be very honest with you, I'd rather have those 16 people spread amongst the restaurants in Virgin's as opposed to you feeding them. Don't take this personally, I'm just, I'm just being very honest with you.
Nope.
I wish that your packages for Virgin's did not include a meal, and they came to restaurants in town.
It's something that we've actually, I mean, we started when this whole economic tsunami just hit here, and we've been sort of crushed by, I mean, like so many businesses around here all suffer. And we priced it at what the industry was doing. We're reducing it by $100 a night, and one of the ways we have to, if we're gonna reduce the price, well, we've already made the commitment to reduce the price, and one of the things that we are considering right now, it's in discussions, Dan and I, and the sales and marketing director are, is to take and remove the dinners. So it may, I'm not saying we are, but it is under discussion, is we're gonna lower it $100 a day, it's something, we've gotta lower our, take it from a chef to a cook in wages, 'cause the only two things we can lower are food and our labor. So we think we can do it this way, which may put the people in town here. One of the concerns is, would be, from down there, would be the walk up the hill. We have some 60, 70, 80-year-old people on board, they could have a little bit of a struggle, but we can work something out. I believe you do have one cab company in here, so it may be that they'd have to get the cab company. So that is under discussion, and it would benefit your town. Now, we have been told that there is some limited restaurant here with quite a long wait, and I sort of, is that true? Plenty of space?
Some, yeah, but I think there's capacity for 16.
That would be a, yeah, I don't wanna say, marketing tool for you, that, you know, if you're coming on such and such, you have to make reservations in advance. So that would be a marketing tool that, you'd have to work that out, if you're not gonna offer the meal, and there are some things availability, it's just all marketing.
We've actually increased our restaurant capacity with, with Antidote that opened up this past season, so our capacity is greater this year than in past years.
Okay, like Mike said, this is definitely under consideration. Just so you folks are aware, the flip side of it, though, is quite often, we don't know what our exact numbers are, we don't know what their preferences are. I've eaten at the Black Sheep a couple of times, but I find that I have to make a reservation there a week or more in advance if I know I'm coming back. So there's some logistical problems with that. We've talked, as Mike said, we'd love to be able to do that, but...
Well, like Mel said, there's the Antidote, there's Park Squeeze, and there's Three Squares. I mean, depending on what you want for a meal, I mean, you can kind of advertise meals of all prices.
And they're all, like, right here?
They're all there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Chris, did you have something you wanna?
I actually have a question for you.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if Matt has ever said anything with regards to our French boaters having to move, because the...
They, they haven't moved, but it has caused some people not to stay. They, they come up and find out that there's not room. That is another issue that we try to address through getting some funds, some grants. We're still talking, even though we don't have the grant to do it, we're gonna see if we can put on about 50 more feet of dockage. So, I mean, just, just until we can get some funds or get some other plans, we're all part of, we're, we're growing. This year was, was a really good year for boating, for Virgin's, it was about 100 more than last year. It was somewhere around the 750 mark. I don't have the exact numbers, they didn't ask Matt.
Something you might wanna look into, Town of Colchester just built about 150-foot dock out there, it got federal grant money for it.
We tried it.
Could you get that?
Yeah, yeah. We applied.
Okay.
Yeah, and we will, we will, no, wait, I read that email. Are we qualified for that, being so far inland?
We're, we qualified, the problem is that the, we, the point, we ended up coming in third, and we lost, you know, some points in various categories, and, you know, we, one of the, one of the items, there was a few items that caused our scoring to be lower than the, than the winner. You know, we're not the easiest to find, that was one of the things. I mean, I certainly know how to get home, but, you know, you know, really, if you're not familiar with, if you're not real familiar with the lake, you wouldn't necessarily know to turn into, turn down and go into Otter Creek. Obviously, there's lots of Canadians that have learned over the years, but we aren't that visible, at least to the, to the grant administrators, and there were some other ones. I was wondering about, I really wish I had Matt's kind of spreadsheet or whatever, but obviously, our peak season is July, all right?
July and August.
So, you know, the fact that there are, that there are Canadians coming down there and being turned, you know, yes, we could add some additional docks, but it's real prime season for us, and, you know, we hate to, we hate to lose anybody, frankly. You know, they've made the trip all the way up from the lake, and to find that there's no room, that's...
Well, one of the things, just so you know, is that we traveled to Montreal also, and we have added another trip, so that's another week that we will not be here during the month of July.
In July, yeah, okay.
So, and we recognize the fact that that's the Canadian holiday, latter part of July and August. So we are trying to accommodate that with our schedule also. We did come up here a couple of times, and there were some boats that took the signs down, or didn't take the signs down a couple of times, and cheered us with a glass of champagne. But, you know, so we understand that you get busy there, so we are looking at that with our schedule. Right now, we're talking about adding July a trip for a week. And our days that we would be here would be Saturday, Sunday, and Thursday, would be the days of the week that we would come here on the proposed 2010 schedule. So I know Saturday's busy, Sunday it tapers off, I'm sure Thursday isn't even a problem.
You get your weekenders to come down out of Montreal, take a long weekend, so. Before I go to Joe, Chris, did I kinda answer your question? Joe, you good? You all set?
I don't know the definition, but they do now down there, don't they? Other boats pull up and tie besides other boats raft, that's what it's called. Now, you don't allow that.
Because of the size of their boat and the elevation, it would be very hard for a smaller boat to get up onto their boat. Usually, they're close to height as they, they pass.
Seen their boat something else?
It's usually, yeah.
It's huge. Okay.
It's to a point, too, of liability, too, so you have to be careful. Yeah, they do some rafting, they do some anchoring up in the basin, so, yeah.
But just so you know, one of the things that we are talking is adding perhaps another couple of cleats to what we have down there, so we can move the boat a little bit farther down in the dock where we come in, which should give a little more room up towards the bow. So, you know, we're, we're conscious of our size and the traffic that you have, so we are looking at, you know, other ways that we can try to minimize our impact, negative impact.
What are cleats?
Cleats are what you tie the rope, uh, the line to, not a rope, it's a line. Boats, it's lines.
We should've, we should've handed out glossary, you know, before the...
The bow is the front?
You know that, right?
Okay, which was four, right or left? Not a line. It's not a line, neither.
I don't wanna give you the right answer, 'cause you don't know what it is.
Oh, I took the course. Randy?
Two, two points. First is, if you're thinking about dropping the meals off in the overnight stay here, is what you could do is talk to the business owners, restaurant owners, and say that we're gonna, this is our schedule, we propose we're gonna be here these nights. What do we, can we book a couple of reservations for people ahead of time, so that they know that you're coming, and their, the time is scheduled out, and if your per, your people decide to not take advantage of them, you could just do a cellphone call a couple hours before, and those spots would fill in. So it'd be just a matter of talking to Ian at the Antidote, or Harper, or talking to Matt, or talking to Michelle at the Bistro, and scheduling that time in.
There might be some other marketing ploys you might be able to even do, depending on what you, time you arrive with some of our other stores, is, you know, see if they'd be willing to give a percentage break on the commodity at their store, and that, that would help also market the local businesses, give it, give a little, give them a little free advertisement, plus it helps entice them to come up into town.
Yep. Well, we have promoted the town, people have come into the shops, come back with knickknacks, hats, things like that from Virgin's. We also worked with one of your local artists that has just moved out of town, the Sean... Sean Dog Tire Studio? Dog Tire Studio. He did two cruises with us, brought some people, local people with him. We got some people from Kansas that came in to be on it, four women, wasn't it? Yeah, the, the last trip was four, the trip before was six, who, and he brought them up, gave them a tour of the town, and they did some water coloring, so we're... Did some chocolate shop over here, the Chocolate Shop, lady there? Right, right. So we are, you know, I have a list, Mel was kind enough to give me a list... Right. So we are, you know, I have a list. Mel was kind enough to give me a list of interesting shops, uh, you know, the younger clientele do like the brew house over there with the local assortment of brew. So, you know, we try to tailor it to what our clientele is and, you know, again, we've been trying to promote Vergens as a stop. Uh, again, it benefits not only Vergens, but it also benefits us because it adds an element, uh, to our cruises where, you know, they, they're still entertained and they have something to go do when we come to a place.
Does anybody else have any further questions and, or any other discussion they wanna ask, have? Um, it's, it's a little bit early. I don't know if you wanna think about this, uh, but, uh, I got a knot of a head. We're not gonna rush anybody. Uh, we'd like to give it some thought and see if we, some more, and, uh, Mel has your email addresses and...
You have a two thousand and ten schedule drafted already? Drafted, draft.
Uh, kind of tentatively, uh, it's fuzzy. We're just sort of getting out of two thousand and nine and it, it, we've been talking for a month in just concept and some, we were just today doing some bicycle vacations up to Champlain.
I think that would be helpful for the board to know really what the terms of the deal is.
Yeah. I think they're looking for another ferry down at Champlain Bridge. You might be able to make some...
Yeah, yeah.
And that's subsidized by the, by the, by the state.
I know, I heard about that. You know, well, I like the fact that it was New York's tax dollars instead of Vermont tax dollars.
So...
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if you have any questions, please give us a call or any proposals.
And you could put a lot of people on that boat, just to ferry them back and forth.
Bring a big boat down, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would take a lot of people.
Put a, put a dock, no, you could, well, you could pull in the Basin Harbor.
Right.
Plenty of drafts there.
Plenty of drafts. Gentlemen?
Okay.
Any other questions of us?
No.
If not, thank you very much for coming in this evening. Uh, you know, we'll, uh, have some discussion, throw it back and forth and see, uh, what we wanna, where we wanna head for next year. Okay?
Sounds good. Well, we hope that you consider...
Have a enjoyable winter.
All right, thank you. We're gonna try. Bye-bye. Thanks very much.
Open up to public comment and Mr. Neal.
All you folks, I got a little list of things in my head wrapped about tonight. Uh, good evening. What was first? Vac, vacancies. I need to split at eight o'clock, so I'm not gonna be around for the discussion about vacancies later on down the road. There are two vacancies on the planning commission, um, which in my understanding from talking to folks is that they're not, um, their personal reasons sort of issues, that folks had other things come up on their agendas. And as I look at it, you know, the, the way that I like to look at it is that, you know, we just got through kind of a major project and, um, it's a little exhale of relief that stuff is over and, you know, those other things are popping up to take people's attention. So anyways, there are a couple vacancies. I'm gonna send an email out to our list of folks that have come to our public meetings over the past year and a half or so, but, um, don't be bashful and drumming up, drumming up business. Um, on our agenda last night at the meeting, there's a couple of issues that I just touched on really briefly, chickens and sandwich board signs. I mentioned some time ago the chicken issue and just, um, the way that the planning commission thought about that months, I don't know, this has gotta be six months ago now or something like that, was basically, you know, it's clear from the zoning regulations and in our opinion that, uh, chickens are not legal in the city of Vergens. Um, our opinion is, is that that's something that we would like to consider changing in the future for a small number, right, manageable. Um, our opinion very broadly is that, uh, issues of noise and odor and this sort of thing ought to be handled by a sort of a nuisance ordinance as opposed to zoning regulations, um, and, and that sort of thing. Ultimately, it's gonna come through the next, uh, revision of the zoning regulations, which I'll get to in a second. Let me talk about sandwich board signs for a second. The sandwich board signs in our, in the regulations, the planning commission looked at it, and our opinion is that it's, uh, not legal for folks to have sandwich board signs that are not right in front of their properties. In other words, sort of the daily chocolate, putting it up in the corner of Main Street and that kind of thing. Um, but it's also our opinion that we ought to allow, that makes some sense, that we ought to allow for that. We ought to encourage people that are driving down Main Street or walking along Main Street to recognize that there's activity going on in these side streets, and we ought to encourage that. Again, that's our opinion, um, and the actual detail of that would be addressed in the next revision of the zoning regulations. As an administrative sort of proposal, it's not something that I wanna do outside of looking at some of the other wider issues in the zoning regulations based on the recent update to the town plan. In other words, I don't wanna have to really, as a, as the chair of the planning commission, I don't wanna have to go through the process of bringing multiple drafts of zoning regulations in front of the city council. It's a lot of public hearings. It's, it's, it's a lot of work, right? Um, so I would just assume have that all happen at the same time. Um, if the city council is getting flack from residents about these issues, um, you know, the planning commission would be delighted to, to look at this stuff at your request and run that through. So that's what the situation is. That's our opinion. Zoning regulations, right. So the grants for rewriting the zoning regulations, the fifteen thousand dollars that have been around in the past years have evaporated under the guise of, uh, you know, less tax money going into the state government, and they've reassessed where that money's gonna go and that sort of thing. Um, our big dream was to reapply for another, uh, for another grant to help us rewrite the zoning regulations based on the town plan that we just passed. I requested, um, uh, just a, a quick quote from Land Works, our consultants on the town plan, to, to do two things. On the one hand, um, just soup to nuts, the full, the full boat of it. Let's go through the town plan. Let's go through our subdivision regulations passed in nineteen seventy something. Let's go through our zoning regulations and bring them all into compliance with the new plan. And that came in, not unsurprisingly, just under fifteen thousand dollars, right? That's kind of the way these things work, I guess. Um, and I also asked for, you know, if we were just to do the sort of the big, the big pieces, which is to say Northern Gateway, historic neighborhood, and standards, kind of looking at the central business district, if we just to look at those three things, um, and that's the most, in, in my opinion, that's the most challenging piece of it, right? There's, there's gonna be people that have lots of opinions. We need to hear what everyone has to think and what everyone has to say and, um, and come to some good, some good conclusions out of it. That's where we need the most help, frankly, right? Um, it's about five thousand dollars, a little less than that. I don't remember exactly the number, forty something, anyways. Um, we're gonna look at this a little more closely at the next meeting. Um, my expectation is, is that we might well come back to the city council and say, you know, we'd, we'd like to ask for assistance in helping us figure out how to fund this, this work. Um, just a little heads up on that, looking down the pike a little bit. Um, lastly, I wanna chat about sewer stuff, and, um, I did just attend the discussion with Zig and Chris and Dave. Uh, I didn't, wasn't able to get to the whole thing, but just a little bit of it. I want to, uh, I, I would offer to the city council that, um, if there are discussions in terms of uses, that the sewer would be, um, allowed to, to serve in Ferrisburg, that that's something that the, the planning commission can, uh, provide some, some work for, to be some labor towards that end. That's what we do, is think about uses and that sort of thing. I, I tend to think it might help to give the council a little, uh, some political cover, if you will, which is to say, the planning commission has, has looked at this and, um, this is what they think, and it's non-binding, right? You can do what you will, but it, it's an offer, okay? Um, my, on a personal level, I think it's a, an opportunity for positive change, which is to say, uh, the reason, I think that we can all be in agreement that the reason we haven't seen development in these parcels to date is because, uh, it doesn't perk, right? They have no sewer. Um, as we see in the, in the Champlain Oil Company property, that is going to change, which is to say economically, this, that had being a barrier is going to fall away. Um, somebody is gonna come along at some point and look at a piece of property in the corner of Moncton Road and Route Seven and say, "Well, boy, I can dump six figures into this property and get, and, and flush toilets." And we can put up some use or other, some building there that complies with the Ferrisburg zoning regulations. My opinion is that, playing this on the positive, the planning commissions of the two towns where the, the city council and the select board, where maybe all four of those groups, um, might be able to, I'm a glass half-full tonight, right? Might be able to get together. The folks in Vergens explain what our concerns are, the uses that might occur on those properties and how it might affect our citizens in our downtown and what those concerns are. And we hear from the folks in Ferrisburg about what their hopes and dreams and aspirations are for those pieces of land and try and, um, and come to some middle ground on where we can see eye to eye. My opinion is, is that if it's something, if, if it, if Vergens wants to affect change out there, if we want to say, "Boy, you know, it'd be great to have housing there such that we have more people to shop in our downtown," or if we wanted to say, "It would be great to have a business there such that we, uh, uh, office or medical building or something along these lines, such that our citizens have someplace to go to work or to get care," um, it's, I think it's a good opportunity to affect the direction that that develop, the future development happens. Um, and I think it can be done from a very positive place. And that's, that's just my, uh, my opinion on it. And, um, again, I would, I would very much defer to the city council in terms of what role you would want us to play. I'm, I'm not interested in, in getting in the way of things there. I think that's all that was in the list.
Does anyone have any questions, Neil? Hearing done. Neil, thank you very much for your input, sir.
Thanks much.
And keep up the good, uh, the great work.
All right.
Okay, uh, item number five, I'd ask for motion on the Vergen City Council meeting, October twenty-fifth. Minutes, uh...
Make said motion.
A motion and a second. Omission or errors? Corrections. I have one. Uh, under Senior Alderman, Randall Olet, the line that reads Dale Norton, his name is Nolan, N-O-L-A-N. Any other comments? Hearing none. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Okay, Ziggy will abstain. Thank you, Zig. Um, let's, warrants have already been through and signed. Joan has those. Um, let's do a budget review. Mel?
Uh, I, I actually did another, uh, line-by-line review and, and can only report the same, that everything overall is, is, uh, is looking good going into winter. Uh, so let's have a, let's have an easy winter.
That would be nice.
Weather's gonna warm up this week. It's gonna hit sixty-something on Friday or Saturday. Uh, that's the unfortunate part. The grass is gonna start growing. Get one more mowing in or something. All right. All right, so nothing there. No, any questions, Mel? Okay. Let's do committees and we will start, uh, with Ms. Chris.
I'm further down, please. Thank you.
Okay. David?
I, um, have a meeting of the, uh, the skate park committee scheduled for Thursday evening at six. Um, I've compiled a draft of rules and operating procedures that we'll review at that time. Still looking for more volunteers. Andy?
I think he's looking for you to help.
Absolutely.
Just make your, sure you have the right gear on.
Helmets.
Helmets. Hopefully...
No.
It's getting a little bit raw. Okay, uh, nothing. Ziggy, uh, surrounding towns?
Well, I've talked to Rick. I saw him on the street the other, Rick, with cheer to see what was going on, you know, about their ordering their sand, their salt and everything. And he says everything is, seems to be, we're all, I don't know. He said we're all talking, so I don't know what that's all about, but...
You, you were supposed to attend the next four-month meeting. Have you found out when that?
Have you heard anything, Mel?
Uh, I know that they have them. I don't, I don't attend them.
Okay. No, I mean, has, has, have they approached you about buying the salt or their sand?
We, we actually have an arrangement with Walt Ham already.
With Walt Ham? What about Panton?
Uh, we don't have an arrangement with Panton. I mean, the reason why we have the arrangement with Walt Ham is because we use a bunker in Walt Ham, uh, of Robin Jackman, so we, uh...
Well, I think somebody from Panton's gonna be getting hold of you for something. I, I don't know what it's about, but...
They may, they may talk to Carol. I mean, that's, I mean, Rick and the, the guys, uh, go down to Public Works Garage, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we do not have a formal relate, arrangement with Panton and Salt.
Minutes, uh, were sent off to Tom O'Brien to review 'cause he had so much information.
Mm-hmm.
The, and Judy didn't hear back, so she's just gonna send those out to the attendees for that last Cracker Barrel, so, um, I thought, you'll see those in your emails shortly. Tonight's her computer night. Hopefully she gets it done tonight. Um, I don't know which name we wanna call you, but we'll call you Joe this time.
Um, I'll hold on till you get to the agenda. I'm, uh, under old business.
Okay.
Then you can call me whenever you want.
All right.
Joe, good one. There you go. Sorry about that.
Everything's quiet. Okay, good. Let's go to the next item, committee. Okay, uh, no, no change on six A?
No.
Um, all right, we're gonna take and go right to six B. Now you can...
All right, here we go. We, uh, we had a meeting, uh, we could go Monday, we go last night of the, of the committee, the, um, the, the public committee that was, uh, I guess Mel listed the members in the, uh, in the, uh, his note here, or it was in the, well, I could just say it's Kitty Oxholm, Linda Holly, myself.
Kim Palmer.
Kim Palmer and Roland Gaiet, who wasn't able to make it. He was watching football, I guess. I did touch base with him later in the week. But, uh, we had a very good conversation about, uh, the swimming pool, kinda how it's currently run. We took a look at the budget, talked about labor. Um, I talked to Roland a little later in the week regarding maintenance. Got a little list of, uh, of what he's doing, and also he's agreed to, um, kinda get some things down in writing in terms of what he does on a day-to-day basis during the summer and also what he does, uh, in the spring to open the pool and the fall to close it up. Uh, we're, we're sort of still in the fact-finding part of this. Um, Mel has graciously agreed to help contact some people. He knew he got some information, uh, from Middlebury, their budget. Um, I've contacted Essex and Winuski. Haven't heard anything back from either one of those.
Yeah, information coming from Waterbury is, we got, we got fees information.
We got fees from Waterbury, but we're not on the budget yet.
Right.
So that's kind of the stage we are, where, where, we've talked to some other towns, tried to get some ideas about how they handle things. And, um, that's kinda where we are. And you had some comments, I think, too. Yeah, uh, you know, obviously Joe is working, working more on the operational side. I'm, I, I'm the one that gets nervous about the, uh, uh, fina, the financial effects. Not that Joe's not nervous about this, but I, I get real nervous about the, about the financial effect of this, of this facility. Uh, and I did call Tom O'Brien, uh, and I called my sister-in-law, Linda, and posed a question. And what it relates to is that the graded school district is clearly going to dissolve. I think that that's where they're headed. And, um, they, as all of you know, they not only own the pool, but they own other land. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what the acreage is, but let's say that it's twenty acres, twenty or more acres for the sake of discussion. And I know that originally their, their thought has been that when they dissolve, their plan is to, uh, is to convey the swimming pool, tennis court, and skating rink, skate park land to the city. And the remaining land, they would, uh, convey to the two schools. And, uh, I mean, so my original discussion with Linda was, well, if that's the way that you wanna dissolve, that's the graded school district and that's their, that's their decision. If that's the way they're gonna do it. Uh, however, I, the more thinking that I did about this, I really felt that, um, uh, that really the Vergens graded school district, in particular the eight acres that they purchased back in the late seventies for twenty-eight thousand dollars, the taxpayers of Vergens bought that piece of land. And, uh, I just, my personal opinion is, is I don't feel that that piece of land that was purchased by the city of Vergens taxpayers should simply be donated to the schools. I, that's my own personal opinion. Uh, what drives... Uh, what drives me to be very open about this opinion is the fact that the city of Virgens is being requested to, uh, own and operate this pool, you know, which has a roof that's twenty years old and has pumps that are X amount of years old, and, and, um, I use these words and so does Linda, the pool has been run on a shoestring. Uh, it, it, really, if you look at their budgets and Joe's looked at them, I mean, I, I think it was last year, the end of the year with ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents. So, when I say shoestring, I'm, I'm talking shoestring, okay? That really concerns me to take that on, and I've, and in talking to Tom and Linda, and Linda, Tom has requested that I frame my position here, if you will, in the form of a, uh, request, of which Linda said that she would support, in that the, the land that, that the graded school district, that needs to be, um, liquidated, that the schools somehow compensate the, the graded school district for that land, so that when the graded school district, in essence, closes its books, whatever money that they have on June thirty, that that money come to the city and be placed in the swimming pool fund, so that at least we've got some chunk of money to start with. Uh, it's, it's, uh, I, I can remember joking to Tom O'Brien, saying, when he, when he talked to me about the pool, and I, I said, "Well, you know, I understand that it comes with a four-hundred-thousand-dollar endowment," and obviously I was joking, but it wasn't a totally a joke. Uh, I'm, I am really concerned with the city taking this, taking this on with, with no money in the bank. Uh, I mean, we don't, we don't have, um, funds, uh, around here if the pool ends up becoming a loss. And pools generally are, uh, they do lose money, if you will. I mean, if you think about what we do, I mean, we've, we have historically given six-thousand dollars a year from the watershed fund or from revenue sharing or from some other sources, and basically that's used to balance the budget. So, that kind of donation needs to continue. So, I, I guess what I would like to hear from the city council, if, if, uh, if my request, uh, is something that other, that members of the city council share, that we really should be looking for the graded school district, uh, to liquidate in such a way that their real estate holdings, uh, along with their other cash assets, upon dissolution, come to the city, of which would specifically go into the, the pool fund, you know? And I'm, I'm not looking for that money to do anything else, uh, but, but to be, in essence, the, uh, the seed money or, you know, some reasonable starting point, uh, so that we, uh, can feel a little better, you know, if we indeed are gonna go into this business. I really, I really, um, you know, I think that, uh, I didn't get a sense from the people that have been running the pool, if they had any idea, you know, I, I was a little bit concerned because we don't know anything about the physical plant there, you know, I mean, that pump could go like next week. Nobody seems to know anything, you know, and we didn't, and admittedly Roland wasn't there, he might be the guy, I don't know. But, you know, I, I think Mel's got a really good point. You know, looking at the Middlebury, I don't know if you looked at the Middlebury...
I did.
Budget, I mean, yeah, that's like, no. And that's like an eighteen-thousand-dollar deficit or something like that.
Yeah, and also...
But, I mean, it's just maybe how they, how the bookkeeping is done, I don't know, but...
Yeah, they, it's, it's even worse than that, Joe. Uh, there was a follow-up email that I wrote, I'm not su, sure that you saw, that, that their budget didn't include insurance and didn't include, uh, you know, some parks and maintenance people, so...
Right.
You know, uh, it, it's, uh, and, and obviously you can't charge two-hundred dollars, you can't charge some family two-hundred dollars a year to use the pool. I mean, but it, it just goes to show that these kinds of facilities, uh, they aren't moneymakers. It's really about how to minimize the losses somehow.
I think that, you know, there's a lot of, I noticed we've got rates from these various towns, and everybody seems to do it a little bit differently. I mean, our, our, our city pool, the, there's a difference between the rates from the, you know, the Virgens residents and people who are not Virgens residents, and the difference isn't all that great. You look at some of these other towns and there's a considerable, I mean, obviously their town subsidize, I don't know whether their town subsidizes it more or they depend on, so I'm kinda curious too about how many people from out of the, you know, I, I just think that there's a, there's a lot of different, looks like, uh, different ways to manage this, and kinda curious to, you know, we're still early in the fact-finding stage, obviously, so it's really be interesting to see how these other cities have done it then.
We've even tried, I think, uh, to approach other surrounding towns to see if we can get them to donate, and that...
We, we talked about that at the meeting.
That just didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And of course, in part, if you, and I understand it, really, you take Ferrisburg, they have a town beach, you know, that people can go and enjoy the lake, you know, Addison, Panton, you know, there's, there's lake property there, and I think that's in part, uh, you know, why folks, you know, unlike the library where all of the towns contribute, you know, approaching, uh, in a broad base to get a, a contribution, just hasn't worked, so...
I think one thing, in my opinion, that this pool has is the, the strong history and the strong current presence of that swim team, and, you know, I think that's, that could be a real opportunity. Uh, they've got a board already in place and stuff like that, and, and, you know, in terms of fundraising or, or some kind of a partnership with a community group, that's a real opportunity, I think, so, going forward at least. So, I mean, Ferrisburg's got a town beach, but they don't have a, you know, all those kids come here to swim on this swim team.
They don't get all that good chlorine, right?
That's right.
I, I thought we were just in a fact-finding mode. I didn't think that we have said yes, we're gonna become the owners of this pool. Um, I thought we still had some research to do with regards to liability and, and stuff...
I don't think anybody said yes. I, that's definitely, I think I made the point, we're definitely in the fact-finding part of this.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in your fact-finding, if, if we decided not to be in the pool business, what, what are the other plans that they have?
I don't think there are any other plans at this point. I mean, we, uh, originally we had talked about perhaps some kind of a nonprofit, that doesn't seem to be a possibility.
Because of insurance.
Right.
One of the big things with nonprofits is the insurance.
I, uh, I, I think that we owe, we owe them an, an answer as soon as we can, Kristy, and I'm not saying let's, let's, let's make some hasty, bad decision here, but, you know, I think within the next, you know, I really think, Joe, within the next month, let's say, I think by December, you know, we really, you know, this board, uh, you know, for one thing, I wanna find out, you know, I really wanna find out if in fact the school is open to, to turning their other assets into cash, all right? That may, that may, um, have some members of this board feel better, uh, you know, I mean, 'cause, you know, I can tell ya, if, if, you know, if, if we don't have any money, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned. I mean, I don't have any money to run the pool, you know? I think there's a lot of questions to be asked about maintenance, how that's gonna work into the, our city worker's schedule. Um, you know, I think the fire department's already involved, Mikey might know.
They, they helped with the pump out in the spring.
Right, and he, and according to, according to Roland, that's the big, that's the biggest...
That's the hardest part, yeah. Getting that...
Twice a week, he does the, what is it?
Back flush.
The back flush, and, but the, the lifeguards take care of the chemicals, he orders chemicals. I mean, not a lot of time there, it doesn't sound like somebody needs to oversee it, maybe, but, and mowing the lawn and so forth. But there are, you know, certainly are some questions to be asked there, and, and, you know, I, I, I'm with Mel on the whole, you know, having a, some seed money there for, for future, um, you know, any kind of capital. I don't know nothing about the pool, you know? I mean, the, in terms of the, what's gonna be required going forward in, in terms of the whole, you know, the pump or the pool. And also, I mean, I, I actually haven't even sent Joan an email, 'cause I sent her eight on Saturday, she's still working through, but she's still, she was still talking to me when she came to work on Monday. Uh, 'cause one of the things that Joan actually in this, in this whole thing, she needs to start thinking about, uh, how, you know, she's the treasurer, all right? They are open for ten weeks, they have employees, okay? So, during ten weeks, you know, they're, if they're, they're either paid every week or they're ever paid every two weeks, you know, Joan has to do payroll for that ten-week period. There's also cash involved, and that's typically, I mean, we, you know, uh, we, it's, that's a different thing for us, you know, I mean, sure, we have community gardens and we, you know, we deal with fishing derby and we deal with Virgens Day, so we do have off-budget cash to some extent that happens around here when people pay their registrations and to the community gardens. This is, this is, this is a cash box and a, you know, uh, you know, city money within a cash box with an employee down there that has daily receipts, all right? And, you know, that's something that Joan needs to start thinking about, you know? I'm, I'm not the keeper of the cash, she's the keeper of the cash, so, how that, the whole cash, the cash handling, you know, Joan at some point, you know, if we're gonna do it, you know, you know, she needs to, you know, be thinking about, how's this work? You know, she may have to, uh, may have to call some of these other places, you know, that we've been in contact relative to budgets, uh, how do they, how does Waterbury, how does Middlebury really handle, how do they handle the money? You know, I mean, you know, 'cause it needs to be handled correctly and accounted for and, uh, you know, some, and I don't know if Joan's been thinking about this, but I can tell by her thing, I said, she's, I haven't thought about that, you know?
I didn't know it was ours.
That's correct. Well, I know the swim, you know, that, you know, Kim was saying the swim team, they pretty much all do that in all in one day, you know, they get somebody down there, they do it all in one day. Right. But, you know, I mean, the swim team budget is kinda, if you look at the Virgens budget, it's all tied in there, you don't know how that's gonna work.
And you get seven days a week, too, to things that's open, so, that, that makes it...
Well, one thing we talked about, what, what kinda labor would be required, and we talked about a director, you know, a director that would, and, you know, there's maintenance issues, and there's a director that has to manage the, the, um, the staff and the lifeguards and lessons, coordinate the lessons and all that kinda stuff. So, um, you know, I think, right now, there's Roland is kinda the ma, is, is the, for years, he's been kinda the everybody, you know, the director and, and the maintenance man and everything. He's pulled back from the personnel issues and just done the maintenance lately, and he would like to get completely out of it, so...
Could you, well, this, we may be getting too far into this because there's, there's a lot of ways to make it work if you want it to work. Um, I mean, you could take and increase the price, uh, based on the average number of people that go to the pool or that join the pool and figure that into a salary that you'd have to pay somebody, so, there's, there's a way to offset some of these. We've got Randy and both Ziggy have some questions, and, so I'm gonna pass it to Randy and then we'll go to Ziggy.
Well, the pool, when I moved here twenty-two odd years ago, that was always a big thing for my, for my stepchildren, was being able to go to this pool. Now, the thought of us not picking this up, kinda, I know money's tight, Mel, and that we don't have a lot of money to spare, but if there's a will, there's always a way, and I mean, we've been taking the money from the watershed fund and putting it into a, we've been giving them their six thousand a year, and there is, uh, some cash in the recreation fund of X number of dollars, I mean, that could be our seed to get started, if we had to. But I would really be disappointed to see that we didn't pick this up. And we need to, need to get it to a point where it can sorta self-sustain itself with a little infusion of cash from the city council, but there's gotta be a way.
Forgot what I was gonna say now. First of all, the last meeting that, when we brought this up, that's why I was asking, you know, about what all that extra land was gonna go, because I had concerns, because we have no money. When we take that over, we aren't gonna, nothing was mentioned of us even having any money. And then, also, you know, this is gonna be a, this is gonna be a, I figure, a pretty good project for us, because we're gonna have to find somebody to coordinate it, you know, to take care of everybody, to form a, are we gonna form a committee? We're gonna have to think about that. Are we gonna hire somebody to come in and run it? You know?
They all become our employees.
That's right, that's what I mean.
Yeah. Well, I think we're, if I may...
Go ahead.
I, I just think we're, I mean, and these, this is all, I really appreciate everybody's input, but we're still, as somebody, you know, 'cause I think we're early in the, in the fact-finding, I, you know, I, I'm hopeful, I was hopeful to have a little more information today from some of these other towns, it's kinda been bounced around, I think, in the office, the way it sounds like, and haven't received it, but...
David?
Um, welcome, is that a secret to anybody that I don't like to spend money? But, um, that, that being said, I, I'm, I'm with Randy, I think that it, uh, it, it would be, um, it, it would be unfortunate if, if we weren't able to gain control of that facility, um, for, for a number of reasons. Um, one of them that comes to mind is that Virgens being the economically diverse place that it is, for a lot of kids in the community, that's probably one of the only recreational resources that, that may be available to them. Um, and, and that's important, uh, you know, very, very important. The, the other piece of it is, is that looking at it, you know, ten, twenty years down the road, I think that the important thing now is that we make a decision, either it's something that we want to do or something that we don't want to do, and we worry about the minutia. Um, and I'm, I'm a hundred percent with Mel with regard to the disposition of that additional land. Um, that property came from Virgens and it needs to come back to Virgens, and I think that that's a good use for those funds. Um, and, and it sounds like with the discussions that, that I've been aware of, you know, that, that the expectation is, is that we will end up taking over those facilities. But I think that it is important that there's a plan in place and some broad, um, objectives in terms of where things are financially. I'm not particularly worried about the minutia at this point. Um, the minutia being procedures and staffing and those sorts of things. I think that if we set some objectives in terms of financial performance, all of those other things can be dealt with relatively easily. I'd, I'd go on record as being supportive of us taking over those facilities. Um, and, and I, uh, I, I think that it's entirely reasonable that, uh, that the proceeds from the sale of that property come back to the city of Virgens to be used for the purpose of getting, getting that facility to where it needs to be.
And, and there's down the road, I mean, it's just not here and now, it's like long-range planning, and it's not gonna happen overnight, is to build something into the system, so you do start salting away, so as stuff goes down, you're stepping backwards.
The other piece of it is that, that, um, that even if it was some sort of other entity that would take on the, uh, the, the ownership and management of that facility, ultimately, what I believe would occur would be what occurs now, is that residents with regard to some of the issues, and, and there haven't been a lot of them, but because we, as a city, participate financially in the operation of that facility, um, whenever there are issues, they come to us to resolve them, whether it's signup times for swim lessons, I, I can't even think of what some of the others are. That's not to say that it hasn't been a well-run facility. But I think that, that it would be somewhat odd if there were another entity that owned the facility, was responsible for the facility, were still funneling taxpayer dollars to that, because I, I think that that's reasonably always going to need to occur to a degree. I don't see that facility being, um, being able to, to operate, um, without some sort of involvement from the taxpayers of the city of Virgens, I just can't see it, so, that's my position.
Just one more comment, I, I just think in terms, if it would ease the council's mind a bit on the personnel issues, I think, you know, if things were to work out, uh, you know, that the, the personnel part of it may be taken care of it for at least a year. I don't think that's something that we would necessarily, you know, they've probably got a pretty good system in place, and, you know, it, it sounds like, coming out of the meeting, it sounds like at least for a year, we may be able to get some continuity, uh, on that, yeah.
It would be almost co-run.
Right.
It's just the way the whole season works.
So, it gives us like a year, you know, the maintenance part, I think we'll have to work into, but the, the personnel part, we'll have a, a, a pretty good buffer in order to figure out how to, for the city to deal with that.
Had a learning curve that first year.
Right.
No, that would be great. I, I think everybody's leaning, Joe, towards to go that way, Chris as well.
I'm just adding, you know, before I'll agree on it.
No, no, agree, agree.
And we're working on that, and we're trying to get as much information as we can, believe me.
Agreed.
I'm, I definitely, I, I know what you mean.
We gotta be ready to take, receive the baton.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I guess, I'd like to ask, what was the reason why they didn't wanna do it anymore? I mean, what happened?
They're dissolving.
They just, they just decided to...
Basically, the Virgens graded school district voted to dissolve, okay? And of course, I mean, the graded school district has a school board, I always joke that there's a school board that doesn't own a school but owns a pool, and that's just kind of a weird thing, all right? But that's, that's where we're at. So, the Virgens graded school district, you know, that used to, you know, used to be responsible for all of the grades, um, then the high school was unionized, and then later the elementary is unionized, so the, the graded school district doesn't, doesn't own a school any longer.
So they're trying to just dissolve, because there really isn't, isn't a purpose. Walt Ham, you know, has done the same thing, right, Walt Ham is dissolving Pantin, because none of them own schools, so you don't need that layer of government any longer. Transportation, which used to be handled town by town, will become clearly shifted over that it's school by school. Uh, triple E is by the school, special ed is by the supervisory district. And so you get to a point where you think, well, what's the purpose of that entity? I mean, it really, it's, it really doesn't have any purpose. However, in this instance, you know, the graded school district, for whatever reason, mainly because it was on school property, the pool was constructed on school property with a board of recreation grant, and the, and that project was, was done through the graded school district's coffers, it wasn't a city project. So they're, they're just trying to dissolve and go out of, go out of business. And, uh, when, when, you know, I think Mike and I, maybe Joe, originally, when we met with the graded school district, there's, there's really, uh, there's, there's really four options, you know. One option would be for the graded school district to not dissolve, and would continue to become a pool, continue to operate the pool. Another option would be for the, for that land to be rolled into the elementary school and be a part of their operation. Another one be, would be to form a nonprofit corporation, and la, and the other one would be for, for the city, all right? The fifth one would be to close down, all right, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't talk about the close down. There, in, clearly in speaking to, to, uh, to Tom O'Brien, he does not want that pool rolled into the educational program. I, I, I don't think, I don't think I'm speaking out of church when I say that, it's really not, it's a recreation facility, it's not an education facility, all right? So it shouldn't go there, so you start eliminating, you know, you're, you're, you're left with the city of Virgin's or some nonprofit, uh, you know, nonprofit organization. Nonprofit organization might, might run just fine, all right, but, uh, insurance could be a lot more, uh, it could not work fine, you know, and now, and now, and now it needs, now it really needs an owner, all right? So, you know, it might be, it might be best, uh, at the end of the day, you know, to, to look very seriously at the city and end up being in the, being in the pool business.
Any other discussion, before we move on to the next item? Hearing none, we'll jump to C. Chris, now, would you like to?
We are very, very near to our final draft. And we are amending some parcels, um, amending parcels to take into account the residential properties on Ridgeview Drive, as well as the two residential parcels on Moncton Row between Ridgeview and, and, and the bank. So we hope to have our final draft at our November seventeenth meeting.
Okay. Can we get an idea, is this, how is this involving, are we gonna have to, like you said at one time, talk to the board of Ferrisburg, or?
We, we, uh, we think that this draft should go to this board, uh, before it goes to, goes to this board, before, before it goes to Tom Deniker or any other property owners, or, or, or the select board, it should come here. Uh, and then from here, uh, you know, it, uh, it can go to, to everybody.
Does it need to go to the voters, after?
Well, it may, the only way that it'll, well, it would have to go to the voters, but really, it would only go to the voters if the Ferrisburg Board of Selectmen agree to put this in front of their voters in March. So, we're thinking by getting this to, to you on the seven, on the seventeenth of November, to discuss, and in essence, be, be released, if you will, to, to everyone, that this is the board's, this is the board's position on, on the mechanism, if you will, for extending sewer, uh, that we would go from there. It's very possible that, that, uh, that the Ferrisburg Board of Selectmen may not be interested, maybe some of the property owners, you know. The way that it's done a little bit, the way that we've drafted this thing is a little bit different. Before, it was spoke about two tracts of land, and the way that it's drafted this time, it's about very specific named parcels that would be, uh, would be involved. So there's no doubt about, uh, you know, whether a, whether a parcel, you know, can connect or can't connect. It's very, it's done very, very specifically. So you'll, it'll, uh, uh, I don't know that the committee, I think the committee is at a point where the committee won't be meeting again, I don't think Christine, or if, if it does it, I don't think so, 'cause I think it'll be, all it just need to do is add those four parcels, or five parcels.
Yep.
And with the, uh, with that draft, and that'll come to the, come to the city council.
So it'll come out?
In your next packet, absolutely.
Good, excellent. That went very well and fast. Good. Any other questions of the committee, the people that aren't, weren't there? Joe, Randy? None, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, City Manager's report.
Yeah, just three, I'll just keep it real brief here, Mike, three things relative to the chief, uh, chief of police process. Uh, the, uh, we actually, I think, reported last time that we narrowed the, the field down to five candidates. Uh, one candidate has withdrawn, and we're down to four candidates. And we have, uh, scheduled interviews on November nine and November ten. Uh, I have actually already, uh, engaged a firm to do, uh, uh, they aren't really background check, checks, it's actually about verification of their application, to in essence, go through, uh, folks' resumes and have them all verified, uh, that, you know, what they say is in that resume. So it's not like a, it's not like a, um, detective going around, you know, sneaking around, doing a, doing an investigation of, of people who've applied for a job. But there will be, in essence, um, you know, verification of everything that's in it, and I'm gonna do all four. In part, I'd like to have information on all, all four candidates are all qualified, uh, so I just wanna bundle that. It's not, it's not a lot of money to, uh, to have that done, so we will hopefully have that for us, either, you know, on or shortly after November tenth. My goal is to bring a recommendation, and I think that's the committee's, the committee's goal as well, is to bring a recommendation to the city council at the November seventeenth meeting. That's the goal. Uh, relative to fire chief, I included a copy of the letter in everybody's packet, and that must, must have been your third letter by now, Mike.
Nope, that was my first one.
Okay.
That's the one I got.
Okay. Uh, 'cause I thought I mailed you one at home, I'm thinking, what am I doing mailing, mailing the mayor? Fire, dear firefighter letter, but anyway, I sent a, I got a letter that went out to all of the firemen. I actually already have two, uh, letters of interest, um, uh, one by email and one on my desk, uh, as outlined in the letter. Uh, November sixth is the deadline, uh, I'll be going to the fire department, uh, supper meeting on November second. Uh, I'm only able to stay there an hour, so I'll eat for fifty-eight minutes and talk for two and leave, uh, just in case.
Now, that's impossible, Mel.
So anyway, I'm gonna go to the meeting, uh, you know, if anybody has any questions of me about the process or whatever, um, you know, and I'm, you know, I'm hoping to, uh, to also be able to bring a recommendation for a new fire chief at the, at the November seventeenth. Obviously Ralph, you know, his resignation is effective November one, I think he'll always be the chief, so, uh, we, we do expect him to continue to, you know, if it's health's okay, you know, he'll continue to go to department, uh, department meetings, that's, that's what he's done for the last fifty-five years on the first Monday, so I don't think that's gonna, gonna stop, so, uh, so anyway, that's on track. And then lastly, um, Joan and I will be really quite busy over the next month, we actually, we haven't, we haven't done anything, we haven't had anything to do lately, so. But anyway, over the next month and a half, uh, you know, we're finally getting around to having the folks from Father Gil Segali come and do our audit. They have some preliminary field work, that they're coming here on November twentieth, I think is the date, Joan, and, uh, and then there's like December seven, eight, and nine. And even though those days are kind of out there for you, you know, it's been a long time since I've been involved with, with audits, and I can tell you the rules are a lot different today than they were ten, twelve years ago. Uh, when they send you their, their request of things that you need to provide, you know, there is a lot of work in putting together everything that they need. Yeah, it's, uh, it's, so, anyway, we're, we're trying to split the work up amongst the staff as to who does this and who does that. So, uh, I mean, typically, you would, you would get the audit a lot sooner. You know, I wasn't one to really bug Father Gil to get here on the sixty-first day after the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so it's coming a little bit later than, uh, uh, than what maybe you have seen in the past. You know, Joan and I actually feel real, we really feel pretty good about having a handle on our, on our finances, you know, uh, it wasn't that way a year ago. But we, we feel a lot better about, you know, all of the various funds, and we understand how they all work, but we're really, I'm looking forward to having this audit and, uh, you know, getting the, getting, getting it finalized, so, uh, that probably won't get to you until, it could be January one by the time you, by the time you get it.
Will you look to hell, Mel? I'm not worried.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I had, Mike.
Okay, sounds good. We're gonna go to item number eight, new business, uh, back to Mel on recycling contract.
Yeah, Joan ha, should have in her packet, two originals of, uh, of each town's contract. Let's try not lose them this time. So anyway, the, the numbers absolutely match, uh, match the budget, um, so, uh, we're, we're okay in that regard. Uh, there is a little bit of a balance in the fund, uh, only because the, the billing sequence for Casella versus J R, we ended up with, with only eleven bills, uh, eleven monthly payments, so there's a little bit of a, there's a little bit of some leftover money in, in that recycling fund, so the amounts of the dollars in the budget in these contracts, uh, should be sufficient, um, uh, for, for this fiscal year. And I'll be sending obviously a letter out to all the towns, and I have a, you know, part of the increase, not part of it, all of the increase is tied into the fact that, uh, recycling, uh, fees, if you will, at the materials recovery plant used to be free, and now they're twenty-seven dollars a ton. Uh, we, we do about thirty-five tons of, uh, a month, so you go and do the math, uh, times that twenty-seven dollars, thus the increase in the fees. So the fees went up, uh, went up by twenty percent from last year, in light of that, uh, in light of the fact that, uh, there's a charge now at the, at the Chittenden County Murph.
I take it we're passing that around for signature?
So there should be four contracts, it should be eight, eight of them in all, you should be signing your name eight times, uh, Addison, Pantin, Walt Ham, and Ferrisburg. There should be two, two of each.
I'll just, uh, bypass me for now, and they'll give it back to me, and I'll be the last one to sign it when it comes through, so that we'll keep things moving. All right, uh, next item is, uh, item number B, planning commission vacancies, you get a copy of emails in your, uh, packet. Mel, you wanna touch base on those in any way, shape, or manner? Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, Neil explained, you know, Andrea, who's been on a few years, uh, she actually is, she's been teaching a class, uh, in Burlington on Mondays, and so she just is, is not available, you know, she actually came to a few meetings, you know, she, she would still come to meetings at eight-thirty or quarter, quarter to nine to at least keep connected, but, uh, it's just gotten to the point where, uh, you know, she just, you know, really came to the conclusion that she just really doesn't have the time to adequately serve, so, uh, so she's decided to take an exit, uh, as has, uh, as you can see about Justin, the same. You know, Justin has been our, uh, has been our vice chair of the, of the planning commission, so, uh, in November is when both the planning commission and the development review board go through reorganization, you know, naming chair, vice chair, uh, secretary clerk, so, uh, they'll, you know, uh, they'll have to do, uh, figure out who's gonna serve, I mean, I'm assuming Neil will continue, I would guess, nobody wants that job, um, but they'll need a vice chair in his, in his absence.
Does a good job at it, so. Okay, um, if anybody has got any names, uh, or knows of anybody with interest, please, by all means, get them submitted to Mel.
Yeah, yeah, one of the things Neil and I talked about, you know, obviously, when, when, uh, when Neil was coordinating all of the various public forums, uh, he actually accumulated a sizable database of email addresses from folks, uh, uh, that attended the meeting, so I know he intends to do that. You know, and I, the newsletter, Mike, you were probably gonna talk about it anyway, uh, but, you know, I mean, relative, 'cause we would, 'cause when the newsletter, you know, unless we, unless we're able to fill those vacancies before the newsletter goes out, uh, you know, if we don't, then obviously, we would news, use the newsletter as well to, uh, to try to, uh, solicit folks to, uh, uh, consider coming on that, coming on the planning commission.
Okay, I've, uh, added a, an item number, uh, letter C, it's a request for catering. Uh, the license, license C is Roland's Place, the location is here at the Opera House on, uh, November sixteenth, it's benefit of the United Way, and because it's, uh, it's involving alcohol, it has to be, with the new regs as of October one, has to be less than a, a hundred or less. And the hours are starting at four. Four, starting at four, going till ten.
Which is in Monday night, he called today to confirm that was correct, and he said yes.
So I need a motion.
Roland's Place owns the old, uh, old land, now? Shalat now?
Yep.
I'll make the motion next.
I'll second.
Okay. Joe made the motion, uh, low seconded, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Still carried? Next council meeting, November tenth, seven P M.
November seventeenth, it's only one meeting in, uh, I'm sorry, I looked at the calendar, there's only one meeting in November and one meeting in December.
All right, correction, November seventeen is the one meeting, all right? I wanna thank Randy for his help at the Highland Forest, we had about two-hundred-and-thirty attendees going through, uh, great turnout, lot of fun. The, uh, this year, um, I had the opportunity to get around to see the different scenes, acts, whatever you wanna call them, and they really, really did a great job, um, had some high school kids, they got really into it, Cookie Stephanitis, uh, did a great job with her group, and everybody was just, and, uh, we had some people said that they, you couldn't get scared, and they came through, and they found out it was very possible. We even had to help, uh, some parents with these, some younger generations out kind of quickly, because it was a little bit much, so that's why we advertised it, uh, at parents discretion, so. One of our members here at the, uh, table had to take her daughter out, 'cause it, uh, wasn't that bad, okay? Also like to thank Melissa for helping at Punkins in the Park, uh, we had about a hundred and fifty, uh, people show up for that, forty punkins, we're down a little bit. Mother Nature had some impact on that, we're sure, uh, but, uh, all that were, were there had some fun with some, uh, hot cider and some fresh, uh, pumpkin donuts with maple glaze, I'm still eating them. I'd like to pose a question and ask for any comments or concerns to the council that they may have about, uh, the Champlain Bridge closure. Anything that you want, may, uh, once I figure out, I've, I've got some emails, um, I should talk to everybody but President Obama, and I'm not to that point yet. I'm trying to find out who the right person is to talk to, because, you know, Douglas is off in China, and somebody else is doing this, somebody else is doing that, and, uh, somebody suggested I go to the Army Corps of Engineers and try to get a bridge in, and, um, well, that's all well and good, but until you talk to the right people, it's, it's a waste of time, so, um, I see that the governor has appointed a person, uh, in charge of this one particular project, so I, I think once the dust settles for a few days, if I don't hear any more names, I may. Tonight, tonight, they're having one, and thir, tomorrow night, so.
Are you any, aware of any clearinghouse or bulletin board or something where people might, you know, if they're need a lot, like overnight lodging, or?
Addison, uh, County Chamber Commerce has thrown out a survey or a questionnaire, so Andy Mayer.
Andy Mayer.
If you want, if, if you have a, a question that you'd like to pose to him, uh, get on to the Addison County, uh, Chamber, uh, website, and you can plug in some information, question, pass, post something, because that's, that, I don't know what they're doing.
Isn't he at Goodrich, gonna be doing something?
Goodrich is working with, uh, the, the ferry. Goodrich is working with the ferry company, they've set up some, as from what I understand, have actually set up some busing to help get their people to and from where, to, at least to the ferry.
I know there've been people calling in too, that, in Virgencia, saying they have some rooms if somebody, you know, wanted to rent a room or something, you know, they're asking any availability for, on that compassion too, so.
I hadn't heard that.
Yeah.
Who's asking?
There was people calling BF Goodrich, telling them, letting people know that if anyone needed a room, you know, not to travel, they were, and so they were going to set up a little thing to get that more organized.
Some other, another group that is impacted by this locally is Northland Job Corps. Some of the people over there, they're working some, again, they've got some, working out some busing, transportation to Basin Harbor to meet that ferry, so they're working some details out there.
And effective today, I talked to a gentleman that works down here in Virgens Building Supplies, and as of this morning now, there's no more fees to take the ferries.
All right. The Shalot Ferry is free, and the Shore ferry is free. That's being subsidized by both Vermont and New York.
They also mentioned the Basin Harbor ferry too.
And, yeah, I didn't, I wasn't sure about that, okay? But those are, those are free, and that's all subsidized by the, by the states, so. Okay? Any other comments you want to talk about, share about? If not, just a reminder that snow will be flying before we know, and removal of snow for the seniors. Is there any snow depth minimum that there...
We hadn't talked about that.
Okay, can you touch base with Dale on that? If it's one inch, two inches, you know, or if, you know, or if it's just goodwill and the seniors can't get out and they need, they get a dusting, we can set something up, so. As Mel mentioned a minute ago, there will be a newsletter that will be coming out sometime prior to the holiday stroll. There will be a holiday stroll meeting this Friday morning, eight o'clock here in the Opera House to start planning that, so I don't have a lot of deal, details about that, but the newsletter will be coming out, will be putting a bunch of different informations. My wife's got her plan in place as to how she's going to organize that, and yes, you're on warning as far as your article, start writing anytime soon.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Something that I did, took upon myself last year, I've got some ideas for what I want to do this year, but I would like to know if anybody has any input on who or whom a group we'd like to, they would like to dedicate this year's city report to. So it can be a person, I have, I have a combination of things in my head, but I want to get some input from the council. So if you can, just drop me an email or catch me at any point, let me know what your thoughts are. So, and I may need some help on some write-ups if it, if it's multi-people, so, okay? Appreciate that. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I would make second.
Lowell made the motion. Ziggy seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.